I'm pleased to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And let the record show that all members of the council are present with the exception of councilmember Steve Vincent, who has asked to be excused this evening. And it's his turn for the opening ceremony, and in his absence, I'll hold court here. So for our opening ceremony today, I'd like to invite two people of the audience who are here with us today, who are running for city council at large seat, a seat I once held before I was mayor. We'll invite Phil Conder and then Lars Nordfeldt to come up to microphone and just briefly introduce themselves to the audience. We have quite a few more residents here than normal, and they're fortunate to have both candidates for this at-large council seat here. So this isn't a debate, gentlemen, but just for opening ceremony, if you could just come up and introduce yourself. And the one request I have is tell me, tell us why you love West Valley City. So Phil, as a W, I hate alphabet Florida, but we'll do that just to be fair.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Phil Conder, and I am running for the at-large seat that he once held. And I've lived in West Valley for about 20 years now, raised my kids here. I love West Valley. I love the neighborhood that I'm in, and I'm in Karen's neighborhood. She can attest, we have a great neighborhood, good people, a lot of diverse cultures. My kids have a lot of friends, great place to raise a family. I'm on the planning commission. I've seen a lot of the positive growth that we've had here in the city, and I'm really excited about what's happening in the downtown area right here, the city center, and up on 5600 West, a lot of good development there as well. A lot of good people coming into the city, a lot of potential I see in the city for even further and positive growth. And I'm excited to be in this race, and it's an honor to be in this race with Lars, my dad, another good man, and I'll turn the timer in.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Conder.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to be here. I'm Lars Nordfeldt, and I'm running for city council. And you know, the reason I'm running for city council is sitting right over here, my little girl. I grew up in this city. I love this town. It's a great place to live and grow up, and I'd like her to be able to say the same thing 30 years from now, and that's my main motivation. And I think we've made some great strides, and I want to just take the torch that you've been carrying and continue in that direction. I think that our city's headed in the right direction, and I want to see it continue. So that's my, that's my goal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nordfeldt. Nothing's more American than to hear from a couple of good candidates, Phil Conder and Lars Nordfeldt. We appreciate you both joining us for our council meeting tonight, and encourage all of you who are here today and all of you who are watching online or at home to please get out there and vote in this municipal primary, excuse me, municipal general election. Every vote does count, and you never know how close these are, and so please remember to do your civic duty and vote this November, or to vote early in October. We come to item, let's see, five tonight, our approval of our minutes. We have the August 20th minutes to be considered today. Anyone like to make a motion on those?
Move for approval of the August 20th minute on our regular meeting, second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. And we have a special proclamation that will be given on our behalf by councilmember Steve Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation declaring September 11th, 2013 as National Day of Service and Remembrance in West Valley City. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of September 11th as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost, and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas the Edward M. Kennedy Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted into law on April 21st, 2009, requested September 11th to be observed and recognized as an annual National Day of Service and Remembrance, and charged the Corporation for National Community Services with leading this nationwide effort. And whereas participating in service and remembrance activities on September 11th is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service and honor those who continue to serve our country today, including veterans, soldiers, military families, and first responders. And whereas September 11th National Day of Service and Remembrance activities are being organized by a wide range of nonprofits, faith-based and community groups, public agencies, educational institutions, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation. And whereas on September 11th, 2013, and on the days leading up to and following this day, citizens of West Valley City have an opportunity to participate in activities that honor 9/11 victims and heroes by joining together in service projects to meet community needs. Now therefore, be a resolve that the mayor and city council of West Valley City hereby proclaim September 11th, 2013, a day of service and remembrance in West Valley City, and call upon the people of West Valley City to honor the lives and memories of those lost through participation in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year.
All right, thank you, councilman. Come to item seven tonight, it's our comment period, seven A, public comments. Ms. McKendrick, do you want to sign up to speak in our public comment period today? Is there anyone here who would like to speak today that maybe didn't get a chance to sign up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please come forward to the microphone.
Thank you.
And state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes. And remember, you're addressing us. It's not necessarily a back and forth, although if you bring up a specific concern, we'll probably point you in the right direction at the end.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor Wender.
Thank you.
My name is Willis Layton. I live at 3691 South 4265 West in West Valley City. Very much like Mr. Conder and Nordfeldt, I have been a very, very proud citizen of West Valley City. I have been very, very proud of the continuing improvements, West Valley, you specifically and generally, ladies and gentlemen, have made in the quality of our lives in this city. We are the second largest city in Utah. Pardon me. I would like to bring to your attention a certain condition in my neighborhood, Mr. Mayor, that I have come to find intolerable. The best way that I can do that, if I may, sir, is show you.
Sure.
A little bit of history, I suppose, is necessary. Approximately 10 years ago, our street, 4265 West, was resurfaced. This resurfacing, I suppose ostensibly created some difficulty for some individuals, five individuals in particular, of 25 residences on my street. I live on a small, little side street of the more or less main thoroughfare, Sinefield. And in order to address these, the concerns of these five individuals, the city placed scrap metal in the gutter. Now, I have lived with this for almost 10 years. In addition to the unsightliness and the sanitary concerns that I have regarding attractive nuisance and rodents and things of this nature, it, the sound that is created by these channels when the residents of these homes drive in and out of their driveway is intolerable. I've found the quality of my life to suffer. And I bring this to your attention in the hopes that this can be addressed. And that's all I have to say. I'm last, since I would like to also, again, sort of demonstrate. This is my driveway. This is one of the residences directly across the street from me. Now, the residents ostensibly say they have the channels there to prevent their car from impacting the road surface when they drive in and out. However, I drive one of the smallest, most low down-to-the-ground cars made today. I have no trouble entering and exiting from my driveway. These individuals drive SUVs and trucks. They have no trouble entering or exiting their driveway. In a moment, you'll hear the sound. Oh, here we go. There you are. This is what I've lived with for almost 10 years. Every time somebody drives into and out of their driveway. It's become intolerable, sir. So I bring, again, bring this to your attention in the hopes that in continuing efforts to improve the quality of life of the residents of West Valley City, this can be addressed. If you're going to improve the streets, please, ladies and gentlemen, this is not the way to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. I might add, never have we had such an innovative multimedia approach to presenting problems. It's very effective. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir.
And stand by, because in the city manager or city council comments, one or more people may address your issue. Thank you. Is there anyone else who's come to speak in the public comment period today? Okay, we'll go to seven B, city manager comments. Mr. Pyle, do you have anything to say about Mr. Layton's situation, or anything else on your mind?
No, sir, I don't, other, directly at least, other than to just report to you that he has been in communication with staff at the city, both in the Public Works Department and in fact, my, one of my staff in my office, Jason's been out there, and I believe spoke with Mr. Layton. I actually went out with him myself to Jason meeting, and I looked at the situation. The request that Mr. Layton is making is one that we would not be opposed to honoring. It's simply a matter of finding a situation or a solution that serves the needs of the residents that are out there too. So we're willing to look into that and see what we can come up with.
Okay, so it sounds like we're on top of that one. Great. Any additional comments on other topics?
No, thanks.
Okay, city council comments. You want to have anything tonight? Okay, I'll just add that we do appreciate the staff and Mr. Now specifically working with Mr. Layton and their neighbors to find an amenable solution here. I'm still scratching my head on why that was, those were installed years ago, but I'm sure we'll take a good hard look at it and see if we can't come to a logical solution there. Thank you. We come to item eight tonight. We have several resolutions for our consideration. 13-128, Mr. Pyle, please introduce this one.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would approve a real estate purchase and buy the Stormwater Utility in the amount of $2,930,000 for a 32-acre piece, which we would like to use for the Ritter Canal Detention Basin Project.
Okay, thank you. As we discussed in our study session, this detention basin is now immediate to the point of requirement, and it's been 10, 15 years that we've been anticipating this day of making that purchase. Council, any discussion to this item or a motion?
Mayor, I'd move approval of resolution 13-128.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion of the motion?
I think just to speak to the timeliness of it, when one of the largest lakes of the old days of West Valley Hunter, that used to be used for water skiing and other recreational amendments, is now a target and other planned, other planned developments that some of those groundwaterers and that will need to go somewhere, and so this will be, you know, a good spot for the city to retain that and also be able to continue forward with some of the plans for that area.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approval of 13-128, say aye.
Aye.
That appears to be unanimous. And Mr. Pyle, resolution 13-129, please.
Thank you, sir. The city is contemplating recruiting a couple of positions, executive level positions, for the purposes of strategic communications, public relations, and community relations. And this resolution would approve a professional service agreement between the, the city and an executive search entity that would help in the recruitment of those positions.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or motion on this one?
I have a comment on this one. To look at the job description right here, to mention about public relation and public I've been here since 2012, and I don't remember, I don't recall what we mentioned much about the thing here we tried to change here in our public relation department. I remember once in our strategic planning meeting last January, we mentioned about this, we're going to make some adjustments, but we don't, we didn't have a good direction or good communication with the public relation department. And I think right now, what we are planning to do is we're going to hire people to do something with the administration and some job related to the public relation. And I think, to be honest with you, it's not fair for the public relation department because we didn't give them a second chance, or we didn't give them the good direction before we, we made the decision to move forward without, you know, telling them what to do. I know, West Valley City, we are growing very good. Last few years, you know, Fairborn Station, the track, the mall, 5600 West, and other places, I think, very good footprint for our city, and we assume in public relation department that they're going to capture that good footprint, but we didn't have a good communication with the department. And I think we, we need to do something, we need to give them a second chance to do, give them to keep the kind of good direction, what to do and need to do. The other thing is, the second item I wanted to discuss about this is, but good thing is, as I've just brought up inside the study meeting today, and I have a whole, you know, list of what we're going to do, I think a good thing. But however, that's going to cost us a lot of money to hire people, and we don't, we don't know what are going to be right after that because for right now, I think maybe really have a concrete idea of what we want to do for our public relation department. The other thing I'm very concerned about is maybe personal things about this whole deal. So what are we going to do with the public relation people, department people there? They're going to wander around a lobby home, in a lobby area, or, to be honest with you, I, I want to see some kind of fair deal in this deal, to give them a second chance and give them a good direction before we proceed in this method. That's my, my point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hume. Are there any other comments or a motion on 13-129?
I would move for approval of resolution 13-129.
Okay, we have a motion, but a second.
A second.
Okay, any other comments to this motion?
Just point out for the record that I filed a conflict of interest statement with the mayor's office on this. I have a family member that's an employee of this firm, so.
So noted. I'll just add that I, in our form of government, we hire a city manager to manage the day-to-day and personnel issues, and there's, in fact, one coming up here on the agenda here, personnel issue, and part of the confidence and faith we have in him is how he works with his personnel and make sure that the talent that we do have, that everyone has the right seat on the bus, and I personally have the utmost confidence in Mr. Pyle and his team that they will continue to find the strengths and talents of all the members of the staff and make sure that they're in the right places to help our city excel. And this is certainly an area where, as a Utah second largest city, we need continued efforts forward on, and so I certainly applaud this step forward. We have a motion, a second, on 13-29. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
But I wish you no. Is that a be okay, when I say no?
Yep.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so it looks like it passes four to one. Thank you for some of that.
And one abstention.
Yep. Four ayes, one nay, and one abstention. Okay, let's go to item 13-130.
Thank you, sir. This resolution will authorize the city to enter into our annual agreement with the consulting lobbyists that we use at the state level here locally. That is the firm of DLS, and Dave Stewart is the person that does that lobbying or fulfills that lobbying function for us. The contract is proposed in the amount of $80,000 and is not an increase from last year, and in fact, has been the same for a number of years.
Okay, thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on this one?
Obviously, and Mr. Pyle, we're happy with the services that that firm provides.
We are, yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 13-130.
Second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
That one appears to be unanimous. 131.
Thank you, sir. This resolution will authorize the city to enter into another lobbying and consulting agreement, and this is with the Hamm Consulting Group, and is for our federal level and national level interests, and mostly as they concern our efforts in Washington, DC. The gentleman who runs the Hamm and owns the Hamm Consulting Group is Mr. Ron Hamm, who we worked with for a number of years. However, this is a break off from the previous group that we worked with or consulted with or contracted with, which is the Ferguson Group. Mr. Hamm has broken away, and we do feel that he and his capacity and his contacts and ability is a better fit for us than our previous relationship with the Ferguson Group, and also actually comes at a discount. We're proposing a three-year contract, but the annual amount is actually significantly less than in the past with the Ferguson Group.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. We always like to save money while accomplishing what we've been able to in years past. Is there a motion on this one, or any discussion?
Mayor, I'd move approval of resolution 13-131.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion here?
Yeah, just point out in the, your past few years, the landscape in Washington, DC has changed quite a bit, and grateful for our previous relationship with the Ferguson Group and the things that we were able to accomplish. Public comment period was mentioned, some of the improvements to the city, and I think a lot of those improvements, you know, came through our direct relationship and help with the Ferguson Group and directly Ron Hamm, and it's, it's good to see that in the landscape change over the past few years, that Mr. Hamm has been adaptive and been able to change his schemes and strategies and the way he operates to give us the best representation in Washington, DC. So I'm pleased to be able to contract with him for a number of years and get our due representation back with our federal government.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of 131, say aye.
Aye.
That also appears to be unanimous. Mr. Pyle, 13-134, please.
Thank you, sir. I'm pleased to announce the appointment, and this resolution would approve the appointment of Mr. Lee Russell as the police chief by the city manager for the city of West Valley City. As you know, and as you just mentioned earlier, the city manager is responsible for the hiring and other personnel decisions throughout the city, but there are a small number of positions which, by ordinance, are also approved with the advice and consent of the city council, and the police chief is one of those. So we're pleased to bring forth that proposed appointment this evening, and this resolution would approve that. I might make note, as I mentioned earlier, we won't be doing the swearing-in tonight. There are still some issues that we need to resolve and get accomplished through post here at the state, but as soon as that is done, we'll have the swearing-in ceremony. In the meantime, we will, however, propose to you his appointment from a contract basis.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions or discussion on this resolution?
I will move for approval of resolution 13-134. Just with a comment, I think you've done a very thorough job of finding us a very qualified person to fulfill this post.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments on this one?
I think just to piggyback on what Karen's saying, is, you know, we've heard a lot about the man and the appointment, you know, within the media in the last couple of weeks, but just, I wanted just to speak a little bit to the process on it, and just how from very early on that, you know, the city manager was also very open with consulting with the city council on the things that we wanted to see and the direction that we wanted to see the, the city go and this position, and from different sit-down meetings to having community partners, other elected officials, other police chiefs come in, to go through the whole hiring process was, was very refreshing, and ultimately, you know, it took a lot of time and a lot of effort, and a lot of people chimed in and pitched in on it. You know, the fruits of it came out very well, and I'm very pleased to see that, you know, sometimes a very daunting task and one that months ago seemed like it was such a, you know, just a long ways away and such a burden, you know, through just going through, leaving no stone unturned, and going through the process yielded a great result, and, you know, pleased to, to C Chief Russell and the things that he brings to the city and ultimately to our community. So pleased to vote for this, and just with an added vote of confidence to our city manager and the, the great job that he's doing in leading the city and the men and women that serve the city every day.
I'd go along with my calls here to Corey Reston and also Karen Lane. I think it's a great for our city, West Valley City, and it's a new chapter and a good new chapter in our city, and I'm very optimistic for this, and I hope it will go well, and I believe it's going to go well for our city.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to do this one a roll call vote, just because it's not very often that we get to provide the formal advice and consent to the city manager on an appointment, and as councilmember Hume said, this is a new chapter for the West Valley City Police Department tonight. So Ms. McKendrick, let's do the roll call vote. I want everyone to voice their approval or not of this hire with each of their own voices, so.
Mrs. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Rushden?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Lee Russell. You've been unanimously approved by the West Valley City Council, and we wish you all the best as you go through the police officer certification process before your swearing-in. We come to item 13-135. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. Along with the previous item, this resolution would approve an employment agreement that was negotiated with Mr., I'm sorry, with Chief Russell for a period of five years.
So now that we've hired him, we're going to have to pay him.
You thought he was a volunteer, darn it. All right, so we have a motion on this one?
I would move that we approve resolution 13-135.
Second.
As I've read over this agreement, it isn't any different than any other major agreement that anybody would have. I think it's a very good agreement, and I think will be well benefited by Chief Russell's services.
I still second it.
You know, I'm actually quite pleased that he wanted a contract and wanted that, it's a way to make that long-term commitment, to say, hey, I want to be here at least five years, West Valley City, and the fact that Chief Russell and his wife are building a home in this community, and they want to be part of our city, they want to be part of this community. And I, to me, that speaks volumes that, yes, Mr. City Manager, you did make the right choice, and this is a man not only for the challenges, but one for our community for the long term. With that motion and that second, all in favor of approving 13-135, say aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose? Okay, that one's also unanimous. Items of new business, we have application S-19-2013. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. This is a final plot approval application by Mr. Lee Comet, and is of nine lot, proposed nine lot subdivision on 2.5 acres of 3260 West and 3650 South.
Okay, thank you. I don't see Mike Markham here. He's the one that is always saying we need to do something with his property, and finally today we are. Council, what's your pleasure here?
Well, we are, but not because of him.
That's right.
But I'm very pleased to see the developers come in and wants to buy that property and put in some nice residential lots there, and so I would move for approval of application S-19-2013.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion on this one? Looks like it'll be a good little infill subdivision.
Yeah, I was going to say for, it's just good to see that on an infill subdivision like this, that, you know, the plans for it are very lofty, and it should yield, you know, a real quality product, so we should, you know, be, be excited on multiple fronts.
And we talk about our city center in Fairborn Station. I think this is part of that echo effect in the surrounding neighborhood of new development coming in, and speaks volumes about the pebble in the pond that we're dropping right here in our city center. All in favor of approving S-19-2013, say aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose? Yeah, that's also unanimous. Mr. Pyle, let's do the next one, S-17-2013.
Thank you, sir. This is another final plot approval application, and is for the first lot and the first commercial development piece of the Freeport West, commercial development that we've all been eagerly waiting and are glad to see here.
Okay, thank you. Any motions or questions or discussion on this one?
I would move for approval of application S-17-2013. I would move for approval of application S-17-2013.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion on this item? I'll just say we're excited to see this development in this corner of the city and it's a big step forward for the Freeport West project. All in favor of approving S-17-2013, say aye.
Aye.
That appears to be unanimous. Mr. Pyle, 13-137, please.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would approve the canvass returns of the 2013 municipal primary election recount, which was completed on August 29, 2013.
Okay, we have, we'll convene wearing our hats as the Board of Canvassers to certify these results, if the board is so willing. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion here?
I would move that we accept the Board of Canvasser, the results, certify the results as the Board of Canvassers under resolution 13-137.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion to that motion? I would just add once again, congratulations, like we said in the opening ceremony, to all who were in the arena for this municipal primary and then, of course, the general election coming up. And it says a lot about our city that we have such high-quality individuals willing to step in and being willing to lead. I've heard that from a lot of people in the community and it's certainly true. All in favor of certifying these election results and approving 13-137, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes unanimously. We have some consent agenda items here. And these, Mr. City Manager, look like appointments to the Board of Adjustments and an alternate there.
Yes, sir. And as you know, we normally wouldn't be separating out the resolutions or the items in the consent agenda. But if I may, I think it is appropriate to mention who and what these are for. These are appointments to the Board of Adjustment, one a regular member, one an alternate member of Ms. Clover Meadows and Mr. William Whitstone. And I actually don't know if they're here tonight, but if they, okay, if they are, we sure appreciate their presence.
Hey, could you both stand? Let's stand and see. So, both of you are here and...
Yes, I regret I didn't actually have the opportunity to interview them myself as my schedule didn't allow that day. But Mr. Paul Isaac interviewed them and recommended them wholeheartedly and we're glad to have them aboard.
Now, are we sure they're up to the challenge? I mean, is our city legal counsel, Eric Buderson, the others, are they all okay with this?
Everybody was okay.
Even Clover? All right. Well, I am so appreciative of people, you can sit down, we won't tease anymore. But we are so appreciative of people willing to serve on the Board of Adjustments. And it's kind of a thankless task, but an important one because we do get so many residents who need to have fair-minded people, take a good look at their situation and make a call. So, thank you both so much for your willingness to serve. And we'll see if your recommendation passes here in a second. Counsel, let's take them, well, we take them together because they're the consent agenda. Anyone willing to make a motion here?
Mayor, I would move that we approve the two items of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. Any discussion?
I just point out that the agenda for the Board of Adjustment was posted last week and I took a look at it. The first item is a tough one. And so, you know, good luck with that one. But, you know, just wanted to, you know, I've had some association with Ms. Meters for a while now and glad to see her willing to come and join. And hope you find some joys and some successes in your service here to our city. And thank you.
And I'll add to Mr. Whitstone. Often, even though it's just an alternate, as we see with our Plan Commission and other meetings, there's many times the alternate has to step up and vote. And even if they're not voting that day, just staying up to speed with the issues and learning how it goes is very important. So, you're to be commended as well, both of you. Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. All in favor of approving this consent agenda, making these appointments, say aye.
Aye.
That appears to be unanimous. Congratulations, you two. And thank you. Item 11, executive session. Any, Mr. Pyle or anyone else for executive session tonight?
No, sir, thanks.
Okay, then we come to item 12, which is to adjourn. And we'll adjourn the city council meeting. And then we put on our hats to do a few other little formal meetings.
Speaking of alternates here, right, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the RDA, the Redevelopment Agency. And note that had an opening ceremony and all members are present with the exception of Chairman Vincent. We have item four, which is our August 13 regular meeting minutes for your approval.
Mr. RDA Board Chair, I would move for approval of the minutes of August 13.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving said minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Any communications or report tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other business, this body was manager.
I'd like to call to order the Housing Authority for West Valley City. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and everyone is here except Counselman Vincent. We have minutes from the August 13 meeting.
Move for approval of the minutes of August 13, 2013. Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any communications or report, City Manager?
No, sir, thank you, ma'am. Sorry. Thank you.
We have a resolution?
Yes, we have one resolution. And this is the approval of the annual report to HUD called the Section 8 Management Assessment Program or CMAP program for the year that just ended June 30.
Any motions or comments on this motion?
Chair, I've read through the CMAP executive summary and feel that it's solvent and would move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.